Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schiffern and I will call the meeting to order for November fourth, twenty twenty four, six thirty at the Planning Board. Um, right now, everybody's here, but I'll still have a roll call just.
Carol Hosses present?
Lance McNally present?
Andrew Shepherd present?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's take our veterans and our current military.
Do we want to make Patrick up? Okay, sorry.
Um, I think our veterans and our current military as well as all of our first responders. Especially in this time of COVID service. The meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to the town's N two channel. One point four Chairman's additions to pollution to six point in time. Uh, Harvard has told us that he won't be present, so I'd like to point Patrick to his own seat. Also, one point five, the minutes are not ready, so I told the twenty first minute to move that to the next meeting. Okay, alright. One point six, administrative report, Beth?
Yeah, I guess I'm going to do this. Uh, you want to read the whole thing or the board wants to read it on their own? Quite a few updates.
Yeah, would you please read it?
Okay, thank you.
And if there are any questions, please just during her report, okay? Because we have time.
Okay, uh, Planning Board, November fourth administrative report. Section one, applications, anticipated applications. Uh, one Depot Street Extension, that is, um, the hearing was continued to November eighteenth, twenty twenty four at six forty-five P M. The Z B A hearing on that project is Wednesday night, um, November sixth. Eighteen Main Street, um, we have a stormwater management technical peer review in process and expect a findings letter from the stormwater consultant prior to the November eighteenth Planning Board meeting. Two forty-nine Main Street, um, and eighteen Main Street, of course, is on your agenda tonight for the site plan review special permit. Two forty-nine Main Street, the application for site plan review special permit is on your agenda tonight. One oh eight, one ten, one twelve West Meadow Road. Request for certificate of completion is also on your agenda tonight. Um, the staff inspections are complete, the as-built and monthly inspection reports have been received. Um, twenty-two Main Street, um, as you know, the Planning Board has received the application for modification of a special permit and the hearing is also tonight. One oh eight Fitchburg Road, uh, still need to record their stormwater management system operation and maintenance plan. I'm just carrying that along on the reports until it's done. Site visits and compliance, uh, Campbell Farm, open space preservation development. Uh, the last residential dwelling is still under construction, so the certificate of compliance request is ongoing. Um, all permits are in compliance with their S M eight construction phase inspection reports, except for sixty-six Bayberry Hill and five turnpike. Three-reel road permit expires December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, and a friendly reminder to renew this permit was sent to the permit holder. Miscellaneous, the land use department is currently in transition due to two vacant staff positions, the land use coordinator and the conservation agent. We appreciate everyone's patience and understanding during this period. New flood maps in the Nashville watershed is ongoing. Staff is working on amending the flood plane, flood plane district bylaw to remain in good standing to participate in new I P for spring A T M twenty twenty-five. Master plan implementation is ongoing. Same with the hazard mitigation plan, uh, with a special note that, um, an update for the hazard mitigation plan and the M V P plan is going to be due next year. Um, so I just recommend that we strategize the plan update to stay current with their eligibility for state and federal grants. So the A D U accessory department bylaw, one forty-five thirty-six, will need to be drafted slash amended to fit state guidelines if and when they are published. Um, M R P C awaiting to do this with a D L T A grant. Town Council recommends waiting until spring to draft bylaw changes. Site plan approval, they're awaiting a planning award grant for M R P C to create this new bylaw for non-discretionary use. Through the grant, they will also then amend one forty-two forty-two site plan review special permit and all other reference throughout the zoning bylaw to remove slash modify where there is misinformation about type of site plan review. M B T A communities, submittal for the pre-adoption review by E O H L C went in on October fifteenth. This included bylaw language, district boundary map, P D F and G I S files and the compliance model. Town Council review was requested of the initial materials on October seventh and an opinion on whether we should submit for A G review prior to adoption at town meeting. So we're awaiting a response from Town Council and from E O H L C. This will need to go through, um, to twenty twenty-five A T M through the Planning Board. Adoption of the bylaw is critical. Official zoning maps, uh, we have five hours of G I S time from M R P C remaining in, uh, calendar year twenty twenty-four and twelve hours in calendar year twenty twenty-five. M R P C has indicated they can assist the town with getting the current unofficial zoning map finalized to propose for adoption at twenty twenty-five A T M. As you know, the Planning Board supports this endeavor. The new map will need to replace the current official maps, um, which are archaic, uh, with a larger one to include the six zoning districts and three overlay districts, expected M B T A. Request was made to M R P C on October twenty-second. Um, bylaw language will need to be updated as applicable as well. We recommend having a bonus zoning map made to include the historic district properties. Open space and recreation plan, yay! Working with, working with M R C and Chair of Open Space Committee Carol Hosses to finalize adding in a couple of more tables and the action table priorities to put back into the final report. The grant writer needs to finalize the A D A self-evaluation and insert an appendix app. Once ready, submit, will submit final report back to Melissa Cryan at E E A and we currently have conditional approval, um, and we need to receive for a final approval letter before the end of the, uh, grant. That's, uh, still going on. The U P W P corridor study, the corridor analysis spearheaded by M R P C to do a safety study along Route one nineteen from Edward Road past the high school and to Proctor Road. M R P C, uh, at last update is going to start data collection, um, beginning this fall slash winter. And, uh, the typical notes about the Planning Board member sharepoint resource holder and the Townsend Fitchburg commuter shuttle, which is still running, um, all services on demand only and writers must book a day in advance to pick up from both shuttle stops, Town Hall or Fitchburg Intermodal. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Okay, I just wondered if you could give us an update on, um, what is the job for these two done?
Uh, internally, internally, yes. I can say internally, yes, for both.
For both.
The base, yeah.
Okay. So was there any indication of when it would be external?
Um, yeah, I think, uh, I think it's gonna be in ten days, so like around, uh, the thirteenth of November or something.
They're not posting for ten days?
I think it posts internally for ten days.
Oh.
And then goes to the public.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay. Alright, thank you for that. Okay, so we still have three minutes before less than six forty-five. Do you think we could take up three point one? Do you think we could get through three point one on the work session before six forty-five? November?
Is it?
It's review and discuss request certificate of completion for stormwater management.
I think so.
Permit on one oh eight to one twelve West Meadow.
Yeah.
Would you wanna, um, give the background for that?
Oh, yeah, um, so, uh, put everything in your holders. But basically, um, the stormwater management system was inspected by both the highway supervisor and myself on two different occasions. I inspected the site, um, after a half-inch rainfall, um, the day after, and I provided the board with photographs. So, um, I went, you can, um, let's pull up, uh, let me, allow me to pull up the comment. There was only one comment to consider from the highway department after his inspection. And if you would allow, the as-built plans have been submitted, um, the operation and maintenance agreement has been updated, um, Mr. Kimble's here tonight. Thank you for coming, the owner of one oh eight, as you recall, there was a lot of, um, working together on that.
Yeah.
Um, between the owners.
My question was, when was the, when was the inspection date after the half-inch?
After the rainfall?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the next morning, because now they're bright and early.
Okay, was there any issues?
Um, yeah, a little bit, yes, at the time, because there was still areas that were not fully covered with grass at that point.
Okay.
Which I was also trying to take care of.
What was that date, though?
Oh, crap.
Oh, that was the end.
Early September?
Oh, September. That was, um, I have that here.
Does the grass build up?
Taking a minute to look.
Does the grass build up?
Yes, it has, or much better than it is, yes.
I have September twenty-seventh on my report.
September twenty-seventh?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that, that sounds about right.
Okay. Cause we had a ton rain in August, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but that was not when any of the stuff was done?
No, um, that was, I, because of the rain in August was the reason that I started to fill in certain areas that there were rills that were coming from the middle of the yard going to the back. And the mound we're going down to where the storm garden is between one oh eight and one ten, I was concerned about that, so I was taking care of that. Um, the last time that they worked on the project in terms of improving the storm garden, I'm pretty sure it worked pretty favorably. We didn't, it wasn't, uh, full blowout like it was in early on months. So it was better.
So after that, after they did that?
Right.
Was the half-inch storm that you looked at after that? Or?
Um, well, it was the day before, um, you know, Beth came by.
Okay.
So.
Came by that.
Yeah, and what I would say is, is that they worked pretty well. The one behind the house did fill with water and, but by the next day it had subsided and there was no water in it. So I thought that was pretty good. And there was no break in regards to the walls ready to come. The one over in one oh eight, one ten, didn't do. Um, the only thing I would say is, is that the storm garden itself at that time worked fine, except the water was finding it a new path that was going outside of the, the rain garden. So, and that was before there was actually grass that was filling in in regards to going down the slope.
Okay, so now we're at six forty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll continue, um, after with the question being.
I have, just have one comment from the highway superintendent, so.
What was that?
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah.
Okay, so it says, um, his that is, everything looks as it should, um, any and all, um, oh, sorry, I have to, I have to go ahead and, now I'm saying I can, I can't read his writing. Uh, oh, and, um, straw waddles and silt fence should be removed. I recommend installing stone riprap at the left corner of the driveway as you are facing, um.
The house.
The, the house, thank you. This will help with erosion. Okay, so do you understand what he is talking about?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
And so what was that date of his comment?
He was more, yeah, ten twenty-eight, he was out there.
Oh.
The highway superintendent.
Okay, and has that been given to, um, the contractor?
It has not, if this is for the board, um, it hasn't been forwarded to the, um, contractor.
Okay, we'll continue after.
Okay.
This, um.
I'll try not to people when you're in, sorry.
I have to do this. Um, okay, I'd like to call, uh, the public hearing now at six forty-six P M for eighteen Maine Harbor Village Mall. Application site plan review special permit to stormwater management permit application. Opened with the board members, please introduce yourselves.
Carol Hosses.
Lance McNally.
Andrew Shepherd.
And Laura Schiffern. In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight and Townsend zoning bylaws, section one forty-five dash forty-two, site plan review special permit and section one forty-five dash sixty-five special permits. Townsend General Bylaw, Chapter eighty-five, M P D E S Phase two, stormwater management and Chapter one seventy-five, Article five, stormwater regulations. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four at six forty-five P M in the Selectment Chambers in Memorial Hall. And then the address and, um, to review an application received from Alicia C. Wuscony, Key Point Partners regarding a proposal to redevelop the existing standalone bank into a Starbucks with a drive-through. The parking lot and associated grassed islands will be reconfigured to accommodate a new entrance location and anticipated drive-through key. Lengths located at eighteen Main Street. Outlying commercial district in the aquifer protection overlay district. A stormwater management permit is requested for the conversion of the, of existing vacant bank in Harbor Village Mall into proposed Starbucks with associated parking lot modifications involving land disturbance. Interested parties can express their support or opposition during the hearing or submit written comments beforehand. Copies of the application are available for review at Town Hall during regular business hours or via email. Interested parties are encouraged to attend respectfully submitted. Laura Schiffern, Chair, Townsend Planning Board. Now, the applicant, Beth.
Yep, Beth.
Would you like to make your presentation, please?
Sure, I am Alicia C. Wuscony, very normal, from Cubeboard Partners, and we represent F B D E Q N L zero zero four, who is the owner of Townsend. Um, our client's been the owner, uh, since twenty eighteen. Um, and we are pleased to present in front of you a potential user, um, for the former Santander Bank, and that's Starbucks. That's Steve. Steve, with me is Steve Blackey, uh, from Argy O'Connell, who's our civil engineer. So, uh, it's easier if I come up here. So what we're proposing, um, is, so this is the initial renderings and elevations for the Santander Bank. We are keeping the structure, so there's no change to the footprint. Um, the existing Santander Bank had a drive-through, um, so what we're proposing is a, in a full exterior facelift to the building, um, so the Starbucks, um, square footage is about twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh, we're proposing sixty-six seats, um, and that's a combination of interior and exterior. Um, what we're creating, what Starbucks would like to create is, um, an area for outdoor seating, um, and that would be for the spring and summer months. And then the chairs will go away, depending upon our weather, uh, the chairs will go away in the winter season. Um, we have created a, do you have the, um, um, so what we're proposing is to use the existing drive-through that Santander had, um, but we're creating a new drive-through which would accommodate approximately twelve cars, um, is what Starbucks feels that that is the sufficient queue line for this Starbucks location in this area. So as you can see here, um, we've created a outdoor seating area, um, this is where the trash enclosure is, this is one nineteen here. Um, but we're taking the opportunity to, and one of the reasons why we're here, um, to realign this parking here, which we believe is a benefit for the center. This parking area here between Hannaford and the old Santander Bank, um, was, uh, not an afterthought, but it wasn't, it was a parking lot configuration that was left out by itself. Um, so we're taking the time here to make some improvements here to better park, um, and I believe we are picking up a few spaces with this modification. Um, in, within the Santander Bank, there will be the typical Starbucks signage with their queue line, um, and that package will be in front of everybody once, um, if this is approved, um, once we go and actually start designing the building and the, uh, presentation package for the building commissioner. So I'll turn it over to Steve unless you have any questions here to talk about any of the particulars.
Mm-hmm. Lance?
Did, did, uh, do you know what the, um, queue size is for drive-through for Dunkin's?
Uh, typical Dunkins?
Well, I would say the Dunkin's that's here in Townsend.
I don't, I wouldn't want to speculate that. I know part of, they have a, they have a little bit more of a challenging drive-through because it's to the rear.
Mm-hmm.
Right, you go wrap around to the rear, so I wouldn't know what that actual queue line is in the back. Um, but this is something that, um, has been, um, depending upon what Starbucks are in, what market, that queue line expands and contracts, um, but they feel that, we've had numerous conversations because we've wanted to get this right with them, that they feel that this is a, um, twelve-line queue line for them. Which is why for, for planning purposes, we try to keep this queue line, um, as tight to both the original design but as tight to the building as possible, so that people come in and then exit out through the main driveway.
One other question.
Sure.
Have, have you had any discussions with the highway department or anyone in terms of traffic? Um, because that's, um, that's a terrible intersection. We did have a traffic study.
They have a traffic study done.
We did, we were anticipating your, that question, um, we did engage in, in a traffic engineer to do a traffic memo along with this plan.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
No, no, no.
It's a huge file.
We're known, we're known for paperwork, um, so, uh, um, we tried to anticipate some of these questions, um, so that's why we engaged, um, a traffic engineer to do, supplement this with a traffic memo, just so that everybody could feel comfortable. Um, we, of course, are thrilled that Santander Bank shuttered, um, it's been closed for, uh, two years. Um, and we are thrilled that, uh, this creditworthy tenant, um, located Townsend, we've been working, it's, um, this is about a year in process to get them here. So we're thrilled to be here and be able to present it to you, so. We like paperwork, too.
Any other questions?
Did, I do have a question about the traffic study, I don't know if now is enough. Of the, um, you had a metric, I think, on like pass-through rate, and it's, I think it's, it surmised at like ninety, you expect ninety percent of the people regularly traveling that road to be the customer base? And not necessarily to add new cars to the route of travel, but it would add new cars to the plaza travel?
Correct.
Is that how it works?
Do you want to go?
That's correct, for the, for the record, Steve Blackey with Argy O'Connell Associates were the civil engineers on the project. Uh, as was mentioned, Vanessa and Associates, uh, did a traffic report for this and a, as you mentioned, they did conclude that the drive-by, because the, out of the gate, the use for the Starbucks is more intensive than the bank. However, because there's such a huge drive-by capture, there's no major uptick in traffic over here. So, uh, they concluded there won't be anything that was detrimental to the, to the roadway.
Right, and I think what they were figuring is about in and out with about ninety-seven trips. You know, Pike Peak is kind of being kind of peaking and drops a little bit at night with, I think it was around like forty-seven or fifty or something like that, and that is both coming in and going out. Um, so they felt comfortable with, um, both the use, but also it being in a shopping center that was traditionally designed for it as well.
Definitely, whatever you would put in there, you'd have more traffic.
A hundred percent.
Cause it's vacant.
Yep, yeah, yep. Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why we try to be a little bit thoughtful with the pattern, um, and also, you know, Starbucks is, although, um, we all know, we all love drive-throughs, and that's most of the retailers, um, especially post-COVID, lean, was leaning into drive-throughs. Um, but also Starbucks has a component of, and that's the reason why you have sixty-six seats. You know, Starbucks does have a component that, um, now that the, the cafes are open again, that there are people that come, sit down, sit with their laptops, so that's one of the reasons why we were thoughtful in creating kind of this parking area, too, knowing that not everybody's gonna go through the drive-through. Um, and we find in retail centers, there's a nice mixture with people using a Starbucks or a Panera to work while they're traveling, you know, but it's on their phone with their laptops, um, and then the convenience of just going through the drive-through.
To me, I didn't, I don't remember every word, but was there any concern about, since you're looking at capturing ninety percent of the people who would drive by anyway, uh, a traffic light? For the in and out traffic?
Um, good.
I think with the tra, uh, with the traffic engineer noted, there wouldn't be a requirement for the traffic light, it would only be a hindrance in this particular case, wouldn't add, you know, wouldn't add to the traffic management, given the su, the limited, the limited potential for uptick, so, uh, they didn't deem it necessary or would, would serve any purpose, I guess, is the best way to say it.
Okay, I just thought that should be out there.
True.
And then, any specific thoughts about the high school being across the street?
So, uh, you know, on a, I'll talk about that on two different perspectives. On the retailer perspective, you know, any customers, good customers, um, on the property side, although the property likes, this property obviously likes any kind of traffic, um, it's more a traditional grocery-anchored center with people coming in and out for Hannafords and obviously, um, our other, uh, what we consider our other anchor, Bailey's. Um, so although they, we tracked people from the high school, this center has never, um, this isn't gonna sway the traffic from being across from the high school, if that makes any sense. People, you know.
How about foot traffic and, you know, may, I would imagine you're gonna have a lot more people crossing the street to walk over to Starbucks.
So, um, that's an interesting question. We, I know they made some improvements when they were doing the high school kind of booking, the, I mean, by day, some of the engineers, um, on the McDonald's side. Um, I don't know how many people cross over one nineteen.
Sure.
You know, that is something maybe we can, we can look to see, we can investigate it, but I don't, I don't know how many people actually cross over.
I don't know, I, I would, I would recommend that you're, you go out there.
Yeah.
When school.
Yeah.
Closes.
Yeah.
Because there's quite a few students, there's a crossing guard there that, you know, has a stop. Because there's quite a few students, there's a crossing guard there that, you know, has a stop sign. And so any sort of tr, going in or out of that shopping center, I avoid it just because it really backs up traffic. And you have a lot of kids that literally cross the road and go to McDonald's.
Yes, I think it happened here, and I think that's where.
No, but the crossing is right at the entrance there, to the right.
Correct, correct. This is the high school, but I think a lot of people, a lot of.
Yeah, but they cross right, they cross right there, they don't cross, yeah, they cross right there.
Correct, and I think that's why this path, I think, was what was studied originally with the engineers, with that, because this has the blinky light, too.
I, I feel, I notice a lot more traffic, more towards the left side of the, foot traffic on the left side.
Correct.
But what I would be concerned with the attractiveness of Starbucks for the youth, would be crossing the entry-exit to the plaza and just, you know, I don't believe there's any sidewalks or really, you'd be essentially just weaving through the parking lot to get over there.
Right. So originally what we, what we designed here, because this is where the, this is where the sidewalk is, right, down in here. So one of the reasons why we put the, this area here was originally one that was designed for potential bike traffic from the bike path.
Yeah.
So that was one of the attractiveness of putting the outdoor seating on this side to allow, to be able to capture kind of someone coming into the, the system. But this is where, so the sidewalk comes in this way, and these are the stairs that come up through the Bailey's. So it's on that side. Because this is where the big retention, stormwater retention period is.
Any other questions?
Thinking back to my high school days, I'm going to ignore the crosswalk. I'm trying to go those direct routes.
Yeah, I was wondering if somebody was going to say that.
Crosswalk there or not, I'm going to go right across one nineteen, right across that grass, so. I've only lived here for two years, but I, I hope people get that.
Sure, sure.
This intersection over here for me is like super wonky. Because you have these, these areas right here, so going from here that way.
The one nineteen there?
Yeah, so this is one nineteen, right?
Yeah, down in here.
Interior.
Yeah, just entering into that whole plaza. You, you come in there and the, the lanes of arcing are just positioned kind of funny.
Everyone is, you're supposed to have the right-of-way, and everyone else has a stop sign.
Yeah, yeah, the intent is to highlight those stop features.
Oh, okay.
The intent is to highlight those stop features as part of the redesign. And that's part of the, you know, right now you have trucks that come around the edge unmitigated, you know, and then you have, as you mentioned, crossing the traffic. We hope that this will provide additional control, if you will, of this area, as well as channeling the trucks, you know, not through, obviously, on the perimeter where there would be crossing here, but it'd be more of a centralized location right here. And we think that's going to make a difference from a traffic perspective.
A lot of people do use the McDonald's entrance off one nineteen, and they go around back. They don't come in that way.
Right?
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
Come in here.
I've done that, too.
Come in, come in this side.
Yeah, yeah, I do.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's also a hope that, also a hope that we'll capture some folks leaving out the shopping.
Right, oh, yeah.
I know this question isn't specific to your, maybe your layout. What, if you're willing to share, what stage of the negotiation with Starbucks are you at? Are they tentatively committed to the site, pending commitments? Or they are?
Yep, yep.
How are your, your other tenants, are they, are they aware or supportive of the new client, new business?
Yes, yes.
Excellent.
Yes. Anything that's.
For traffic.
Yeah, and, you know, attracting such a strong, you know, a strong operator is always beneficial for, for everybody. Both for people who may not have come to this center, but this is allowing them to stop, right? So the synergy changes a little bit. And, and not everybody is, you know, is a Starbucks drinker, right? But it's just something that looks and feels new, and then, you know, starts off, you know, just attracts different people that potentially didn't realize that, you know, the jeweler was here. You know, it's, so it's, it's that kind of reawakening, that people may have passed it because it's not where they shot, but now they realize, oh, well, I can go here, or our new tenant, our newer tenant, one nineteen Nutrition, will benefit just for seeing new people.
Just, just a moment.
Good question.
Yeah, just a moment. Andrew, to your comment regarding how, how did the tenants feel?
Yeah.
Do you do survey? Do you survey your other occupants to see their pluses and minuses to get their, some work in?
We are in contact with our, with our tenants. So just in the conversation, we've been, we've been on this site for a while, since 2016. So in conversations with our, with our tenants, you know, a respect for our clients, some of those conversations we need to keep confidential.
Yeah.
Right, until, but we have a feeling for what's happening, what their feelings are. But for the majority of this center, they've also been longstanding tenants. So it's the best of both worlds.
Okay, public comes after, okay. Thank you. Um, thank you for that.
Sure, sure.
You know, having that out there, I think is good for them. Okay, if nobody has anybody, anything else from the board?
Uh, one more. So the, the rail trail is, it was right over there behind the, right there. So what would be the logical walking path for our walker to come off and then to Starbucks?
So have the.
I have an overall that shows that.
Do you know that, Andrew?
Out there.
I know the route I've traveled.
Yeah, I don't have an aerial showing that, but.
Which route have you traveled?
Oh, come right out behind Hannafords and either go to the right or hug it to the left.
Yeah.
Right by the dumpsters.
So, I think when we originally started this, oh, way back when, was some, catching people somewhere in like this section? Um, but that's, you know, one of the reasons, kind of, again, kind of everybody's thinking about the trails and bikes and bike tracks and open seating, so that's kind of was the intention of designing this area here.
Would you, you don't have any proposed work on the edge of the property towards the rail trail, so.
Not, not at this time, no. Everything's focused in and around this construct, this area itself.
Right.
Would you consider having any signage in that area or enhancements to encourage a path off the trail?
We could look at it.
You did.
Any preference of which?
Uh, that would be.
Access point off of the trail?
No, wherever.
As long as they're not walking straight through the parking lot.
Right.
You know, the safest.
Yeah, right, safest route. Okay, I need to do the referral comments, if you guys are ready. Okay, um, these have to be read into the record. This one is from the Board of Health. In regard to the special permit application for eighteen Main Street, the Board of Health offers the following comments. In, in the planning board application, the applicant's consultant used water meter readings to determine the existing flow to the system, and then added the Starbucks flow to prove that there is available capacity. Three-ten CMR fifteen point two oh three lists design flows for certain facilities' uses, and these numbers must be utilized. Three-ten CMR fifteen point two oh three six allows for the use of water meter readings to establish a flow where a use is not listed or the facility has unique design features which result in significantly different flows than those listed. Three-ten CMR fifteen point two oh three six requires water meter readings be doubled for a safety factor, and use of water meter readings also requires approval from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. In the past, Key Point Partners has provided a spreadsheet with occupants' uses, square footage space, et cetera, to the Board of Health to make a determination if there is available capacity in the system to accommodate a new proposed occupant. A similar spreadsheet must be provided to the Townsend Board of Health for the board to make a proper determination as to whether the system has available capacity to accommodate the Starbucks. The proposed use will likely require installation of an exterior grease trap. This will require a permit from the Board of Health. A food service permit must be obtained from the Board of Health. This will require some middle of an app, an application, fees, and kitchen plans to review for compliance prior to starting kitchen build-out. The property is served by Town Water. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. From the Conservation Commission. Comments are within jurisdiction. I'm not sure I can read this.
I think it's N O I, what is?
I, I don't know. No, no has been submitted. N, N O I?
N O I. We, we received our Hong Kong, N O I decision.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the hearing will, hearing will take place ten twenty-three, twenty-four.
It, it did.
It did.
Yep, yeah, and we, and we, they, we got a unanimous decision.
They're all set, okay.
Yep, with the N O I.
Very good. Thank you. Highway Department. These are available in print, offices.
I think it was a no comment.
No comments, correct.
Yep.
Okay.
I just put it in my hand to make sure.
Okay, sorry, I did see that initial there. I was looking for the comment. Okay, and then this one, land use coordinator was no comment. Fire Department, no comment. Um, Water Department.
I think the Fire Department did have a comment.
No, there's a checkmark.
Is that right? Oh, I thought they were in favor of it.
No. No, that's the next one.
Okay.
Uh, Water Department, great project, no issues. Okay. Coffee drinkers there. The Board of Selectmen, no Board of Selectmen available. Obseed. All right, that's for public record.
Right.
All right, um, next. All right, um, was there any other written correspondence?
No, not on this.
Okay. Um. I will note that the stormwater management permit application is in the peer review process. Findings letter will be available prior to November eighteenth, so this will probably be continued to that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, now it's, there's no other written, so nothing from the public comments?
No.
Okay. Um, for discussion of any other or additional technical peer review, there, there is none. Um, now public. Comments?
Do, concerning Starbucks, just a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm retired, so I don't have to worry about traveling, commuting or anything. But my only question would be, is, I'm thinking, school starts, what, seven-thirty, seven o'clock, something like that? And, but that's also a time period where people are commuting to work.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm, I don't know if there's like, say, a crossing guard or somebody at the location of when you come into Hannafords, but my only concern is, and having used Starbucks myself going to work, that there is a tendency to have several cars or whatever, or up to twelve, that could be in queue to get a coffee. But then coming out, what about school buses coming in from both directions? Because they're coming from Pepel, I would assume, and they're also coming from Townsend area. Is that going to complicate that intersection?
You're speaking about this maneuver vehicles coming out at that particular time. So, so the, the traffic assessment was done, it, it is done in the lens of what the peak times are. So it's evaluated in that spectrum to say, this will be the peak times, and what, what type of traffic will be there at that, at those peak times? And that's evaluated again in that lens. So it's been considered as part of the traffic management?
It's just that I could see a, a problem there. And just because I know some people are just a little bit too fast coming out of a place because they're running late, and you got kids, and you got school buses, and school buses are turning, and I would assume they always have the right of way. Just a comment.
Valid, and that, and that's one of the reasons why we instantaneously hired a traffic engineer there, right? Just to.
And they would have more detail.
A hundred percent. That, that's why we wouldn't, we wanted to come into this hearing with that review, with that honest third-party review. And that's why we presented it in the package, just so that everybody could kind of take a look at it and understand kind of the perspective.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Hi, I'm Cindy King, and I'm, I want to speak out in favor of this project. I'm going to confess that I am a Starbucks drinker and a customer, so I'm, I'm, of course, leaning towards that no matter what. But I think that it's, Starbucks would be a great partner to have in Townsend. I, I think that, yes, the traffic at that intersection has been a, a complaint center for a number of years for the, for the residents of Townsend, but I think that it would benefit the town greatly if, if everyone involved, both community members, the, the mall or the shopping center owners, and just, any, anyone that, that can contribute to ways to, to assist with that as needed, would, would be, the benefits outweigh any of the, the problems, I, I think that would come up. I think, no matter what business would go in there, we would see an increase, some increase in traffic. And we can't possibly restrict what businesses would go in there. You'd say, to not have any increase in traffic would mean, we, we will only allow a business in there that doesn't have customers, which kind of defeats the purpose in, in that, in a retail center like that. And I, I think what's really excites me, not only because it's Starbucks, but what, what excites me is about for revenue for the town. I think not only, you're making a number of, a premise to the property, so that increases the initial bump on the property values. There'll be an, at least a slight increase in property tax revenues for the first few years that this is going on. And then it's a restaurant, and what I think a lot of people in, in town forget, that we have a meals tax. We've, as a town, we've taken the, the max, meals tax. So we'll get, it, the more customers that come into Starbucks, the more money, revenues that come into the town, and that will help all of us with, I mean, we've talked override for the last four or five years, but every penny that we can get can help with other town budget things. So I think anything that, any of the boards involved with the approval of this project can assist everybody that's trying to make this happen, to make it happen, and to get it quickly. I really would like to not drive to Littleton or Leamester or Nashua to get my Starbucks.
All right, thank you, Cindy.
Good, thank you.
I, I have three public hearings tonight, so I'm trying to get through this one. Was there anybody who wanted to make a comment about the Starbucks this hearing? Okay, hearing saying none. I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to November eighteenth at six forty-five P M.
I make a motion to continue this public hearing till November the eighteenth at six forty-five P M.
Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing being seen none. Roll call, both, please.
Here, the House is you.
Ms. McNally, yes.
Ms. Warren, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Shepherd, yes. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yes, thank you.
For sure, see you on the eighteenth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Did you, uh, who is the second, please, on that? Pardon me?
Who's the second? Okay.
And you all, are you all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Second one, I'll be, we'll, we'll all be on tape with a yes in our names. Okay.
All right.
We are now at seven twenty-one P.M., and I'm calling the public hearing to order for twenty-two Main Street. Uh, modification to site plan review special permit. Uh, please introduce yourself.
Carol Hosses.
Lance McNally.
Patrick Warren.
Andrew Shepherd.
And Laura Schiffern. Uh, there is a public sign-up sheet circulating for this. Um, do you have another sheet going around?
Oh, actually, yeah, everybody signed in.
Okay, we don't need it separate if they leave, but we give it. Okay.
Just for this property, I'll be abstaining, so...
For eighteen, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I'm gonna jump out, and then I'll be back when you guys are ready.
Um, does he have to leave the public hearing?
It is, the state's recommended it, but...
Which you have to recuse?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, yeah.
It's, it's best practice.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
I, I will for the sake of instance advice, but I'll be back.
So he's not making faces.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'll be just in.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Andrew. The record will show that Andrew Shepherd is excused himself. In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight and Townsend Zoning Bylaws, Section one forty-five dash forty-two Site Plan Review Special Permit and Section one forty-five dash sixty-five Special Permits, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November fourth, at seven fifteen P.M. in Selectman's Chambers at Memorial Hall. And the rest of the notification, to review an application received by Sally Thurber regarding a modification of an existing special permit to accommodate Massachusetts Department of Transportation comments. General realignment and design of parking lot, the property is located at twenty-two Main Street, Assessor's Map forty-one, Block six, Lot zero, zoned OCD outlining commercial district, and in the aquifer protection overlay district. Interested parties can express their re- support or opposition during the hearing or submit written comments beforehand. Copies of the applications are available for review at Town Hall during business hours or via email town address. Respectfully submitted, Laura E. Schiffern, Chair, Townsend Planning Board. Okay. Applicant, sir, you want to introduce yourself?
Uh, so for the record, Chris Anderson with Hanigan Engineering here behalf of Sally Thurber uh, for the modification of an existing site plan review and special permit. Um, as was just right into the record, um, this project was approved a little while ago, um, and since then, uh, the applicant's been working through D.O.T. comments because we are within, uh, the jurisdictional area of the Mass D.O.T. Um, during that review process, uh, several concerns were raised by the, uh, D.O.T. relative to the access and the original configuration of the property. Uh, the Board might remember that the original layout of the site incorporated a rounding, or a driveway that effectively encompassed the entire structure. Um, what that did was it created a significant, um, in our, in our office's opinion, uh, intersection concern, because no matter which way the vehicle came out of the site, it would have to turn around the shoulder in order to pull onto this road, and this road is a very heavily trafficked way, so, um, inherently created unsafe condition in our opinion. Um, during that process, we did review with, uh, D.O.T. relative to their accessibility requirements and everything like that, that D.O.T. is now currently pushing forward to make the area more ADA accessible. Um, in those conversations, um, we ultimately determined that the road or the access to the property as well as the parking configuration need to be reconfigured. Um, so as shown on the plan currently, uh, we've realigned the driveway so that it provides a ninety-degree, uh, intersection with, uh, Main Street, which inherently creates a much safer condition. This becomes a more traditional intersection, if you will. Uh, from there, uh, the ADA parking space will be right immediately on the front of the building, and the remaining visitor parking, uh, employee parking will extend south into the development and will be right off of the paved driveway. Uh, the stormwater management system has been reevaluated to confirm that it still complies, it still does. Um, we incorporated the, uh, drainage report with our supplemental. Um, and, yeah, other couple benefits that does, that do occur because of this reconfiguration is that we've removed a significant amount of pavement immediately in front of the building, so now it's more green space, lawn space, rather than parking area. Um, with that being said, uh, those are the, uh, general reconfiguration comments that we've had to address with D.O.T. If there's any questions from the Board or the public, I'll be more happy to answer them.
Board members? I guess not. Um, do we have any referrals on this one?
Yep.
Um... Okay, from the Building Commissioner. See attached comments from ten three. Believe new layout is better than original. Uh, these are his ten-three comments. I have reviewed, reviewed both designs, and here are my thoughts regarding ten-one Hanigan design. One, they have an additional three parking spaces, which is compliant, need eight to have ten through ten with our bylaws. The original design did not account for the vestibule, square foot, and only had seven. Uh, two, the handicap space, one, is all that is required per mass AAV. It should be van accessible, eight feet wide, unload area, which it, s- which seems to be compliant. It appears they removed a significant amount of paving, which results in much less impervious surface area, another good point. They removed the H's, H-cap ramp, handicap ramp, and simply are using a sidewalk. In my opinion, is much easier to navigate for a disabled person, which is another plus. Curb cut, although they are moving this, with proper state permissions, I assume, I see no issue with this location. It is now existing close to Patriot Pizza, and they are going to be close t- to McDonald, uh, to McDonald's instead. Uh, same in my opinion. Six, the new design is very simple to understand and use. The, this older one, I think, would cause confusion to some people. Um, and that was from Bob Gar's side. Land use coordinator. See enclosed email for plan comments. And actually, plan. And the highlighted part in the plan is to consider adding a sidewalk along the perimeter of the parking lot so that visitors, animals are not walking across the spaces to access the building. To work with Hanigan Engineering to determine whether the large stormwater management pond shown at the near site is necessary. There is about five thousand square feet of proposed tree clearing to install this basin. Forest cover is one of the best natural stormwater solutions, so I would like the Board to consider seeing if there is an alternative stormwater BMP that could be installed elsewhere on the site, um, e.g. rain garden perimeter along the proposed parking lot. Conservation Commission, no comment? Board Selectmen, I'm not gonna read it again. Just no comment. Um, and I think that's it. So now, public comment. Any public comment? None. Okay, and so, and did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
Um, at this point, I don't think so, no.
Okay, and, and he has, or the applicant has received, um, department comments?
You have, right?
No, I did not.
Oh, okay.
No, that, that, first time I saw this.
I see what we're doing.
Okay, so, yeah, I will give copies to you.
Yep.
Okay, and I emailed them, so they may all be able to...
Okay, so, um, hearing being seen, no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to November eighteenth. Uh, which one do you want? November eighteenth or twelve-nine?
Um, I believe the only comments that we've seen are some minor ones relative to land use, um, so I think we should be able to get those turned around by the eighteen.
All right, to the eighteenth at seven fifteen P.M.
Make a motion to continue the hearing till November the eighteenth at seven?
Fifteen.
Fifteen P.M.
And I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none.
Carol Hosses, yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
Patrick Warren, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
And this one, um, this one, pardon me?
Over to Andrew.
Uh, yes. And let's see where we are. We're at, um, six forty-five, seven fifteen.
So it's gotta be for the time?
Yeah, I just, I, I think I'm gonna ask for a, a little break. For just, um...
Text point, you're very much.
Oh, seven forty-five. Seven forty-five. Okay. Six forty-five. Seven fifteen. Okay. Um... Uh, with everybody's permission, I'm gonna take a piss down.
All right.
Because we have a few minutes, and then we can, we might get one other thing done.
Okay.
Okay.
And so how, is it Emily or Emma?
Emma.
Okay, so you gotta rate the second time, Emma.
Yep, yep. She's good.
Good.
So, how is your trip?
Oh.
To Albuquerque.
Yeah, it's been months now, since I've seen you guys. Uh, it was good, it was good.
Did you walk the mountain, up the tram?
We did not go up the tram. We did a hike, um, almost ever, thank you. Um, it was like a knife's edge hike along the ridge line.
Yeah, I'm afraid of hikes, never getting up there. I was barely getting up the tram.
So, were you in Albuquerque?
Yeah, we were in Albuquerque.
You know, the only state that I have not been to is New Mexico. I've been to forty, the other forty-nine states.
No kidding?
We've gotten, we've been to a lot of states based to the airports.
Sure, sure.
Airports don't count.
Airport spaces don't count.
I'll sit there.
Well, airports do not count.
Well, airports.
Yeah.
Going to school there?
Yeah, yeah.
Would you, would you be willing to find me?
Sure. Thank you.
Put that tram up the mountain.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's beautiful. Yeah, I mean, you get such a great view.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a great little area.
I had no idea. Twenty, thirty minutes.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Does it matter?
And so is that where you're getting married?
We are getting married in Albuquerque, yeah.
Why are you picking Albuquerque?
That's where Emma's from.
Oh, she's from there.
That's her hometown.
Oh, okay.
So, figured, uh, her family's a little bit smaller, so I figured would, that compared to my family size, so we'd do the wedding out in Albuquerque, and we'll have a reception in Townsend. It's, uh, I mean, she's from there, so it's easier for her to plan.
Oh, did you meet her, okay.
Uh, we met at school.
Oh, at school, okay.
At school. But, you know, we're trying to think about like food and menu and specific things, like from two thousand miles away.
Oh, yeah.
It's a little easier for her. It's nice, it was nice to go down and kind of look at everything.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was your first time? Nope, nope, uh, nobody knows. Seven, five, six. Oh, yeah. She happens to work on the, uh, Brooklyn, Brooklyn Airport today. I'm sure you did.
Yes, I did. All right, everyone. Um, I'd like to continue with, uh, the matter on West Meadow Road. And... So where do we, where do you think we are right now?
I guess that's why I'm here, I'm not sure. Um, I think the rain, where the storm gardens are working, um, but we really haven't had a major downfall of rain since either, so...
Yeah.
It's hard to say, except when they did put, um, they put rock on two ends of each storm garden, that seems to have done a, a great job. The grass is coming in, like I said, um, on the other side of the mound, if you will, that goes down to the storm garden, especially the one between one oh eight and one ten, I'm going to let the grass grow long, to, you know, get some deep roots in. And I'm hoping, and I'm pretty confident now, because the rain that we have had, it really has drained, it, you know, um, the one behind the house, some standing water for maybe a couple hours, um, maybe half a day, and by the next day, it's gone. So to me, that says it's working. So it is coming down, because there are, if you look at the, the yard, it, it is pretty steep in certain areas, so the water does run. Um, you know, I'm, I'm new to this, I'm learning, but it appears, in my opinion, that they are working at this time.
That, so... Where are we in the process? Because I'm sure that there must be, well, I don't, I don't know, but, um...
Yeah.
There must be, s- somebody is being held up here with something. There's a contractor that's done things, and there must be agreement between the two of you that maybe funds or whatever, maybe...
Yeah, there is money involved, yes, that the storm gardens need to be completed, yes, and approved.
So, yeah, um, this, uh, the developer is online, if you wanted to ask him a question. Um, but as far as the planning board, um, and the town, everything is in order. Um, and that report from Highway, if you wanted to, you know, wait until you have a conversation with the developer, um, about maybe that additional work or can discuss it right now, but I see nothing holding this up.
I guess, I, my question would be is, are you planning to, um, um, fo- following the recommendations, um, in terms of the, um, stone riprap?
Yes, don't, say that again.
His comments are, everything looks as it should, uh, hi- in other words, are you planning to follow the Highway Superintendent's recommendations?
I haven't seen them.
Oh, has, has the developer?
No. So, that's something that you could...
Phil, could you chime in?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I'm on my phone, I don't know if you can see my face or not.
No. We can't, we can't see the name film.
Sorry. Hi, no. So, Highway Department's, uh, comments are new to me tonight.
Yeah.
Oh.
But I, I believe that the grass is almost down almost along the edges of the driveway, so... I'm, I'm not, I don't know if he's, um, seeing something, I don't know if he's seeing...
I mean, his comment is, I recommend installing stone riprap on the left corner of the driveway as you are, um, facing the house. This will help with erosion.
Okay, I believe there's like a little bit of bark mulch or wood chips on the corner of the left, front left-hand corner of this driveway.
I think it's stone.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's saying stone, but I think, I think currently there's, there's wood chips or bark.
Oh, okay.
Oh, and he wants stone.
Right.
Yeah, it's like a four-foot, four-foot little, uh, section.
Okay. Does it, does it make sense to have him get that in writing and that we, um, address this again in a... Does it, does it make sense to have him get that in writing and that we, um, address this again in our next meeting?
Yeah.
And just see what, what transpires and what gets done between now and then?
Right. One comment though, um, Phil, I think you might go with this too, um, I understand the left side, but when we really had the downpours this summer, where I saw it run off into the street was if you were facing the house, it would be on the right side, because there is a drop in the, um, in the yard, if you will. And a lot of it ran down there, cause I saw it going across the, the driveway. The other side, yes, but it, I don't think it, it's not as severe as it was on the other side, but stone would probably make sense.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I don't believe there's any more erosion now, I think everything's established.
Yeah, well, I think.
But yeah, we, still on both sides, I'm, I'm fine with that, just, I just wanna get this kinda wrapped up in a little log.
Yeah, me too, Phil.
With the board.
I'm with you.
Would the board consider, um, you know, I'll go do that tomorrow if that's, if that's fine, subject to approval for adding the stone. I'll go talk to the highway superintendent and tell me exactly what he wants to do, or I can do it tomorrow.
If you can vote, you know, appropriately, just make your vote very detailed.
Okay. Clear, okay, um, if you're.
Yeah, I guess so, are, are we saying on both sides, Phil, or just that one side?
Yeah, uh, both sides easy, it, it sounds like it's a, a real easy thing, riprap on either side.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree, okay.
And then also remove the, uh, silt fence and straw wattles up there, that was another comment.
Yeah.
The, uh, the other com- Lance, would you please read the other comment for Phil?
Yes. Uh, hold on, I gotta scroll up here.
So then we can have that as part of the motion?
Yeah. Um, the, um, other comment was silt fence and straw?
Wattle.
Wattles need to be removed, silt fence and straw wattles need to be removed.
Phil?
Sure, yeah, consider it done.
Okay. Okay, someone else, would you make the motion?
Phil, could you do it Wednesday instead, we have grandchildren tomorrow?
Uh, sure, but me and you, uh, we can talk.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's, that's fine. I do wanna talk, so probably need to talk to, yeah.
They come first. Okay, um, can you make the motion, please, with those two stipulations, that we approve the storm?
Okay.
Yes, um.
We, we approve the storm water? No, you're, there's a certificate right there, um, on the file folder, so this is what you're doing.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're gonna approve that, um, with the conditions that we've talked about.
Okay.
And you'll sign.
Okay, um, yeah, thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna try this one, um.
I have confidence in you.
Alright, so the planted, the planning board conditionally approves the storm water management per- permit certificate of completion, conditioned upon, one, that the silt fence and straw?
Wattle.
Wattles need to be removed.
Okay.
Second, that the, um, riprap, stone riprap is installed on the left corner of the driveway as you are facing the house.
I think he said he'd do both.
The left and the right, excuse me, and, um, approval from the highway department, or highway superintendent.
Well, per their suggestion, but is highway gonna go out and locate it again after it's done?
I, I think, uh, Phil just basically had said that he was gonna meet with the highway department.
Okay, fine, okay.
Yeah, just give a call to see what size, size stone, he'd probably tell me on the phone real quickly what he wants, it's, it's probably very standard.
He's always gonna do that. Okay.
Okay.
So she had that motion clearly? Well, I mean, you can figure out once you listen to it again, okay.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta.
And there is a second, Andrew seconded. Is there any other discussion? None, vote please.
Carol Hoffs is yes.
Lance McNally, yes?
Nick Montrich, yes.
Andrew Schiffern, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And we got that done before six forty?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, Phil.
Yeah, have a good night.
Yeah, it is, let me just see here. Okay. Seven forty-five P M. Call the public hearing together, the guidelines, whatever. Calling to order the public hearing for two forty-nine Main Street, application site plan review special permit. Uh, roll call of the board.
Carol Hoffs is present.
Lance McNally?
Nick Montrich.
Andrew Schiffern.
Laura Schiffern present. And the sign and sheet is still the same. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, in Towns and Zoning Bylaws, Section one forty-five dash forty-two, Site Plan Review Special Permit and Section one forty-five dash sixty-five Special Permits, the bor- Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November fourth, twenty twenty-four, at seven forty-five P M in the Selectmen's Chambers at Memorial Hall and all the addresses to review an application received from Amy Shaw regarding a change in use proposal to renovate existing building structures located at two forty-nine Main Street, assessors fifty-one block ninety-five, lot zero, map zoned, D C D Downtown Commercial District and Aquafer Protection Overlay District to open and operate a United Parcel Service commercial store. Interested parties can express their support or opposition during the hearing or special written comments beforehand. Copies of the application are available for review at Town Hall during the regular business hours and via email through the planning board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend respectfully submitted Laura E. Schiffern, Chair, Townsend Planning Board. And the advocate. Mr. Smith? Okay.
So I'm gonna explain a little bit.
Hold on, introduce yourself first.
Yes. My name is Apurashah and I own the property at two forty-nine, two fifty-one Main Street.
And I'm, I'm Kevin Smith, I'm, I'm not his representative, however he is my friend, and, and I thought I would try to help him through, especially in cases a little bit of language barrier, if.
Okay, we will allow that.
But maybe more the communication side.
Okay.
So, this is the existing building, we have.
Do you have a copy?
Yeah, um, they have the copies, they have the copies of this as well.
Only one, only one.
Um.
You've seen them? This is the existing store, this is that little section from the carpet store.
We have, we have this, is that different?
Um, we submitted the one copy as well, question.
Um, yes.
Yeah, so this came in this afternoon, um.
This is it?
Yes, so it's, yeah, it's just got stamped in like three o'clock, so it is uploaded in your folders, but you're probably just getting a, a look at this for the first time.
If I could, if I can, if I can show the board, this is the existing store, this is the little section along the carpet store.
Yeah, I have it.
This is currently an eight-foot wide opening in this, and that's the reason, basically, we wanna close that up, that little wall.
Oh. Uh-huh, because this is gonna be separate.
Going in the store. Yes, just to separate this.
Used to be separate before.
It was separate, and now we're, they're bringing it back to separate.
Yeah.
But, uh, we made that block of wall take out, but now we wanna put that back, we wanna make a E P S store in that section.
Okay.
This is the current store, this was closed up at one time, he opened it back up, now basically we must close it back up again.
This is one nineteen here.
One nineteen, back at the rear of the building, which is parking, which is that section, back in parking right there.
And both units have a front door as well as the back door, with both, both units have a separate restroom as well, because it was used to be a second unit before.
Okay, so this is the plan for the parking specifically, and then what he was just showing us was, that's just like a hand drawing of?
Well, it's, yeah, it's an architectural drawing of the building, but a sketch of the building. You put this, you put this in perspective, that would be it.
Okay.
The parking.
Which is the reason for the plan.
Which is the reason for the plan, you've got that parking there, you've got the potential for two more here. And then this parking will be the municipal parking, or town parking, which is allowed, because we're within our feet of the building. They were two parking spots short, weren't you, what were you short, two or three?
Two parking spots.
Two parking spots short, yeah, two, basically, right here, that are right next to the building, and then,
To the ten parking, you know, eight. The additional parking is, uh.
We could use some additional parking, I don't, it's not gonna be a happening place, not gonna be a busy situation, so, um, you know, how many people a day are gonna go in there and drop their stuff off, five, you know, ten, or whatever there is, it's not a, it's not a wide crowd of people that are gonna use it.
My wife's a pretty heavy Amazon shopper, so.
Well, you might have around the Christmas, around the Christmas time or something, but that's UPS anyway, Amazon delivers right to your house, so I.
Okay, well then, let me go through the, um, referral comments, and get those into the record, and then we'll see where we are. And can I just ask, Beth, have, have the applicant received the referral comments?
Yes.
Okay. Should make it easier. Okay, so from the building commissioner, see attached ten ten comments, okay, from the building commissioner. I reviewed the application and have the following comments, one, zoning, this would be an allowed use in D C D District. Principal use table, section D dash ten, retail stores and services not elsewhere set forth, okay? Two, building, this is not a change in use per building code, only per zoning bylaws. My understanding is this area in question is part of a merchantile operation now, and this is, and this new operation would be considered merchantile use also. I would recommend they review final layout with building department to see what changes may be required based on existing, based on existing, they should be in good shape. The building department cannot order changes when use is not changing and minor alterations are being done. Three, accessibility, it appears from their site plan, they have an accessible parking spot as they are not changing use, I cannot make them add anything per code. But again, I would recommend a review with the building department to see if there is anything that can be improved, or if you have any questions. Uh, so I guess I put this. Land use coordinator. Applicant has provided existing conditions only, need a plan showing proposed conditions, both should have.
Legion.
Legion?
Yeah.
Both should have legion.
Legends.
Legion, which is.
And all other components as required by one forty-five dash forty-two. Narratives or architectural plans for proposed use should be included.
So you may be submitting that.
You submitted it, okay.
Do we have it already, Beth?
Yeah, the legion is not, not spread on that plan right yet, it's under the corner.
Okay, okay, alright, we have it, it's to, it was gotten today, so she's not reviewed them, okay, very good. Uh, Board of Selectmen, I'm not gonna read that again. Uh, Conservation Commission, no comment. Uh, Border Health, no comment. And we have, okay, we have a petition.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
You, you should have a historic.
I think it was a historic comment.
Yeah, the historic district, sure.
Yeah, because I, it was a historic district comment, um. Well. Okay, well, I think I had it, um, this is building. Uh, this building. Uh, land use. I might have missed it, so I'm just gonna do it again. Historic. This property is located within Townsend Historic District number one, and will need to comply with all district requirements prior to approval. Okay, so they have this, cause you're saying they got all of the, okay.
Did you also read the Board of Health?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, they didn't have a comment.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, I just missed it.
Yeah, Board of Health didn't have a comment.
No comment.
But I just read the historic, thank you. Um, Selectmen have no comment, Conservation, no comment, and Board of Health, no comment.
Okay, thanks.
Um. Okay, and then, um, I don't know, but in the whole time that I've ever, that I've been on planning, and Lance, you've been on planning longer, have you seen a petition? Have you ever seen a petition?
No.
I think that's kinda cool.
I think they have some good customers.
Oh, but I have to read this, I have to read this. Um, petition to support the opening of a United Parcel Service U P S store at two forty-nine Main Street, Townsend Mills. We, the understand, are s- undersigned, are supportive of the change in use proposal submitted by Amy Shaw, which would allow the renovation of an existing building structures at two forty-nine Main Street to open and operate a United Parcel Service U P S store in Townsend's Downtown Commercial District. Reasons for support, increase, increased convenience. The addition of a U P S store will provide a convenient local option for shipping, receiving, printing, and other essential business services benefiting residents and local businesses. Economic growth, a new U P S store can attract more foot traffic to the area, fostering economic growth and supporting nearby businesses. Community development, the U P S store will make use of an existing infrastructure aligning with the goals of Downtown Commercial District and help strengthen the downtown area as a business hub. Minimal traffic impact, we believe that the proposed U P S store will not cause significant increases in traffic. U P S stores typically serve customers in short visits, which will prevent congestion. Additionally, the lo- location is already zoned for commercial use and the nature of business at U P S store generates less continuous vehicle activity than larger retail businesses, further reducing any traffic impact. We encourage the Townsend Planning Board to approve the special permit and site plan review for the purpose of U P S store. We believe this development will positively contribute to the vibrancy and convenience of Townsend's downtown area and serve the needs of the community. Public hearing details, Townsend Planning Board will hold a public hearing to review this proposal and then the date and the time and location. We invite all residents to sign this petition in support of this proposal, together let's make Townsend a more connected, convenient, and vibrant community.
And if I can add, there's forty-two signatures.
That was really nice. Yeah, there's forty-two signatures, I don't have to read them all, do I?
No.
Okay, cause I'd have to be able to read them, to be, yeah, okay, um, that was nice.
Thank you.
My opinion.
Um, also we have a, still we are operating as a two separate unit, even though the block is there, the wall, we pay two bills, electricity, gas, everything.
Mm-hmm.
Everything's still on separate services.
Still on separate services.
It hasn't been, it never stopped.
Okay, so, um, the U P S will be a, store will be a separate entity anyway, so you would keep that separate, okay.
Just to show the board that it is, it is currently two separate uses or two separate units.
Mm-hmm.
Within the building.
Okay.
The only, the only thing that's really needed to do is this eight-foot wall that they opened up when they put the lottery store in there, and when they opened that up, um, you can't close it back up, with a, come up to the pool and basically. and when they opened that up, um, you can't close it back up without going to the foreman, basically.
So until two thousand thirteen, we have that wall closed and closed. The unit was also rented to the clothing store.
Yeah.
But two thousand thirteen, they back ended the unit, so at that time I put on for rent, but I was not getting any, like, uh.
Customers.
Customers, so I thought that let's just make, oh, use that space as a, for the store. So we're still using as the, um, putting the screens and just the storage room kind of thing.
So, um, um. Confused about the wall, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, did you have to get a permit to take the wall down?
Yes.
But not from planning, just from the building inspector?
Not from planning, just from the building.
But now the building inspector said that we have to approve the wall going back up?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
I, I don't want.
Well, it's another business going in.
Change of views, maybe.
Change, it's, it's a separate entity, which would probably require,
It's a separate entity, yeah. Yeah.
You know, you put an UPS store on, it's a busy place, maybe a couple of weeks during, during the Christmas time rush or things like that. Other than that, it's not gonna be a very happening place.
Okay.
And, uh, but it still requires coming back before the board.
Does the board have any other questions? Public comment. Cindy.
Hi, Cindy King again. Um, I wanna, I'm speaking out in fa- again, another business I'm in favor of. I know this family has been trying to figure out additional business services that they could offer so that they could increase their, uh, business revenue, of course. But, um, I've been a customer of UPS stores in the region, uh, for, for many years, there's a lot of benefits to a UPS store. But the, the issue, um, one issue is putting a UPS store in Townsend is excellent, not just for Townsend, but for the region. The closest UPS stores to us are two in Nashua and one in Westford. I don't even know where the next closest one is.
One in Pittsburgh.
No, there's, yeah.
There is one in Pittsburgh now?
Yeah, in Pittsburgh.
Oh, I didn't even know that.
I don't know, I don't know if that's close, the John Fitch Highway one that was there, I don't think is there anymore.
But still. Boy, I think, I think you're right, I think you're right.
Yeah, I don't think you're right.
But Nashua Street in Lamonster, I think that one is still there.
Yeah, yeah, there is one there. Yeah, yeah, that's a big.
Near Route, uh, one ninety.
Yeah.
And two, at, and.
I don't know that that's still there, I don't know that that's still there, it could be, but I.
Actually, it's a railroad bridge. No, they're still there.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, I think that's still there, cause I go there.
But, but even, but even so, the UPS.
You gotta hike, you gotta, you gotta travel, you gotta travel.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Exactly, I mean, but, but to have it in Townsend, there's a lot of people that use a UPS store and I, I, I mean, I, I support the, the business and I, I don't wanna go against what they've already presented, but I disagree with the, I think you're underestimating the number of customers you're gonna get by a lot. I almost think that you could get away with, don't go too crazy with this wall, cause I really think that you'd benefit from the whole building being UPS because of the, the number of packages. People who have businesses in their homes, they need to have a, 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 a business address where they can get.
You're gonna get a lot of stuff getting shipped to, the post office as well.
There's so much, I mean, and it's continuously throughout the year, yes, Christmas is a crazy time.
You know.
But throughout the year, there's businesses and people in the area, not just Townsend, Peprol, Groton, just over the New Hampshire border, they don't wanna go up to Nashua and Lunenburg, and they're gonna come to the Townsend area. And the, people get, if you, they're, they're gonna have a mailbox service. So people can get, it's a mail drop, like mailbox, et cetera, only UPS has a really excellent mail service. But they also, you get your packages delivered, people that don't want packages put on, you know, for the porch pirates, they're gonna rent a box at the UPS store and the packages can be delivered, that's something the U- USPS does not offer. So people will have their packages brought in there, so they're gonna have storage space for all these people that leave their packages for five, five, six days before they pick them up. But it's, it's a really hap- it is a happening place. And I, I think it's good, it's good for the community, it's good for the region to have that UPS store here, and I also think it's good for them. But I, I mean it in a positive way to support that business, I think you're underst- underestimating the number of customers you're gonna have. I think it's a really excellent thing, but I think in the future, be prepared to consider getting rid of the convenience store.
Maybe they'll, maybe they'll wanna come back here, maybe they should.
Okay, one thing at a time, one step at a time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, it's a really good, but I, and, and I mean that in a positive way, not to scare anybody off from that business going in there.
Okay.
But it's, I, I think it, it is a good thing.
All right, thank you, Cindy. Mary Jane?
Yeah, hi, I'm Mary Jane Churchill, from ninety-two Main Street. I just, I'm, I'm from the Historic District, and I just want to, um, enter these documents
Yes, me.
because there was some issue if the property was in Historic District or not. So I just wanna confirm that it is, and I have the original, um, creation of the district with the app.
Okay.
Just so I enter it, it, just so everybody's on the same page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if Andrew can take that and sign it in, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for doing that. So, um, any other comments?
Yes.
Public? Oh, okay.
I, 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 I'm John Cabal from, you know, Torres Lane, Townsend. Uh, I generally frequent, sick half of, well, maybe a half a dozen times a year, go to the UPS store in the Drumhill, uh, Rotary in Chelmsford. It would be great to have one in Townsend, I'd be, I'm not an everyday customer, but an occasional customer. Uh, it just seems to me to be a good thing, pull an occasional person from Peprol and Ashby into town, kinda diversify, um, the traffic.
And get a Starbucks. And get a Starbucks for a town.
Okay.
Um, and I, 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 you know, when I go to the, the store in, uh, the Drumhill, on, unless it's Christmas, I go there and there's maybe one person in line ahead of me, maybe no one. Uh, so it's not thousands of people all the time. When I go there, I'll spend like either minute and a half there or I have to pack something up, it's like seven minutes. So, but I'm in favor, I think it's a delightful idea.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment, sir.
Thank you.
Nothing?
Oh, well, I worked for UPS for forty years.
Okay.
I delivered to plenty of mailboxes. In fact, there's one up on Con Ave in Brighton, maybe have a dozen parking spots, but there's a line of stores, there's probably seven stores there, just a dozen parking spaces. They never had any problems with, uh, volume, and there's no other place to park.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
Boston College is across the street, St. John's Seminary is here, it's just that little block. They do a hell of a business and it's never congested.
Oh, thank you for your comment. Anybody, yes, sir?
Yeah, Ray Stinky, I live in West Townsend, I've been here thirty-five years, I, I think it's a wonderful idea. I, I've known the family for quite a while and, uh, they're, they're really kind, nice people and they're good business people, so. I support the decision, so, I hope it comes here.
Thank you for your comment. Okay. Okay, I don't think because of the late, um, submission of this and not, you know, gone through everything and now with the historic comment, that we can make a decision tonight. But I certainly believe we can continue, can, do you think to the eighteenth?
Mm-hmm.
You're right.
I mean, we can do the eighteenth or the twelfth, what do you think?
I don't, it's not too, too complicated, I don't.
And the only thing that was added to that plan is the legion up on the right end, upper right hand corner.
Left hand.
That's, that's what was missing, I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, the board does. The board does need to make determinations, um, on the bylaw, basically. And, um, I did put in a staff review, but you need to determine whether or not, um, I'm sorry. Uh, well, we're, well, there's a couple of items in the bylaw. Um, for reasonable alternate access is available.
Is that the one that you?
The, the, the particular access to the site shall be arranged to avoid traffic used of local residential streets situated in or bordered by a residential district. There's a number of items that the board should actually review, um, that weren't done at a staff level, it's kind of a board decision.
Yes, this is a one.
So those are things that you should discuss before you, you know, go ahead and, uh, take, take action on this. Um, sell any packet. You have to determine, uh, whether the parking, that the proposed parking plan is adequate because it's not, they're not providing ten spaces, they're providing eight.
So, yeah, on the lot, it's eight space, but, uh, on the Brookline Street, there are two space on the other side and there are plenty of spaces, maybe more than one.
Kevin, Kevin did mention that, um.
This is the municipal parking here.
Yeah, the municipal parking within a hundred yards can be counted.
Hundred feet.
Or a hundred feet, sorry.
Yeah, and you have two, you actually have two, you, you probably have ten right there, better than a hundred feet.
So typically a site plan would show the fifteen and proposed conditions, and there's no proposed conditions on that site plan.
There is a handicap.
It's simply existing, that's why the board would need to go through and, and make those determinations, um.
Okay.
Number four, access to our way shall be of a design and have sufficient capacity to avoid queuing of entering vehicles on any street. That's unknown, um.
Well, that's existing.
The board would have to make determinations about those items.
That's been existing for fifty years.
How would that apply if, if, if that is already existing?
There were two businesses there before.
The proposal, the proposal is an increase in use, for, it requires more parking. And with more parking requirements, it, it requires more analysis in terms of queuing of traffic on Main Street and volume, similar to eighteen Main Street. So if they would address those, I think like even a statement about those, you know, the board would, it would behoove the, the board to make a determination on those items. It's in the site plan review bylaw, it's, it's right out of the bylaw. Um.
Okay.
I can't make those determinations, so.
Uh.
No, personally, I mean, we had a chance when you came and visited us for more of an informal meeting, uh, earlier this year, we, we did,
Do you want to go through? Yeah.
I, I can't remember what else were you on at that point, and Patrick probably weren't on, so it probably would be smart to push it
Twice.
No.
No, it wasn't here. But.
just so we have a chance to talk with you guys about it. But I do remember talking about the parking requirements and thinking about it and having the chance to drive by and say, man, it'd be really nice to have a UPS store here. Um, you know, it's a, it's a very tight, you know, I don't think, I don't foresee the, you know, the perfect arrangement of things. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with it is as it is and the fact that they had two businesses there previously. I do think there's gonna be a lot more traffic, but I also think, you know, you're not really going in there to chit chat, you're going in and out.
It's in and out.
So, I, I feel okay with it, but I, I don't mind if we push it to another meeting to, to have more dialogue on it.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I share your comments, I'm comfortable with what I've seen here.
Yeah, good.
So.
Patrick?
Um, actually, the, you said you work for UPS and you pick up packages, deliver them, et cetera?
What do you use?
At, at, so at a, at a UPS store, how often do you, you come in and pick up packages?
Every day.
Once a day?
Yeah, you go there, I work there at night.
I think the situation here would go, you late afternoon, late afternoon, they back up in the rear of the building.
Yeah, he's a little.
Yeah, it takes a few minutes, they usually help you out, you're in and out.
So it's probably the delivery truck that delivers to Townsend. When he's all done delivering to Townsend, he's going back to the depot yard, they probably swing in there and grab, grab, I'm assuming, the same UPS truck that delivers to Townsend backs in the back door, chucks two or three boxes in and whatever he's got and, you know, and goes.
So this really though isn't about the delivery people, this is more about, I need to mail a package and I wanna do it through UPS. Or I'm returning stuff and I have to return it via UPS. So I, as a customer, just come and drop it off there in town, which is more convenient for me than going to Lamonster or Johnson.
Probably, there you six bucks and out the door you go, I don't, I don't know what's.
I think this question is related to UPS truck, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, if they're four on back, then that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the back door for both units, we have two back doors.
Not on one nineteen, parking across the.
Yeah, the trucks aren't gonna take up, the trucks aren't gonna be parked up in front of the wall.
So when you go, when you go in the back of the building, just for trying to picture this, when you go in the back of the building, would you have a delivery truck back there that would then drop off in the back?
We, we can, yes, we can, yes.
A van would pull right up along the Methodist Church, I'm assuming, or, or pull in and it would act right in.
You can see in this map.
Okay, so you have, this is, this says paid parking.
All right.
That's the back.
Yep, and we have that go here, on Quonklin side, yeah.
And on that door.
And what I'm assuming. And, uh, you know, the, if it's coming in this way, probably gonna, I don't know, yeah, no, it's probably gonna pull in here, from the back in here. If it's coming from this way, it's probably gonna pull in the back and just go right out onto the, right out onto the road or head up north, I don't know which way it's gonna go, it's probably gonna be delivery, right, look, UPS drops stuff off at your place. At the end of the day, on his way back to Chelmsford or wherever they are, they'll probably be able to heal back in.
Yeah, I don't, that'd be a tractor trailer, it wouldn't be a tractor trailer, there'd be a round, there'd be a, a little Brony van, that's all.
Oh, no.
And we have a best, maybe.
Well, until you see all of that.
It's the same thing that delivers, yeah.
Yeah, house, right.
And you're gonna have everybody delivering, you're gonna have FedEx delivering, the post office is gonna deliver, Amazon trucks are gonna go in there and deliver, but they can all go in the back.
Yeah, I got, this is the Amazon sign, stop UPS.
They're sending, people have mailboxes at the UPS store that they're gonna be renting and they're gonna be picking up and plus people are gonna be returning through UPS, Amazon packages, so the Amazon is gonna go there once a day, at least once, well, once a day to do that. FedEx, if you, people rent a mailbox at UPS store, Fedex, everybody's gonna be delivering.
So we have Amazon boxes at our store currently also, but I don't see any increase in traffic or any congestion or anything. We currently have them, there's a box in that second unit, no.
I think so, yeah, okay, all right. I'm gonna, um, if, if you wanna hang in, fine, I'm gonna go through each one of the things that we need to address with the board right now, okay?
Yeah.
So these are all in reference to the bylaw, one forty-five dash forty-two. And one portion of it, one forty-five dash two. Inspector or planning board prior to filing application for a new site plan review special permit. The project is not eligible for exemption under section B.
That's fine, you don't need to do anything.
That's fine, okay.
I think you just basically did identify two things that we need to really focus on.
Yeah, I mean, the drawing requirements, um, the drawing requirements are, you know, they were, I haven't had a chance to review whether those have been addressed.
Uh, when was the parking?
Okay. The next two are done.
So you can, you know, accept it as is or you can go through it now or however you want.
So I had conversation with Jessica and she mentioned only about the parking and I still have the email as well from her.
Okay. Um, so I'm gonna go through D, drawing requirements, right now. Uh, site plan designs, site designed plan, subject to site plan review special permit shall be prepared by a registered architect, landscaped, ar- landscape architect, professional land surveyor, or professional engineer.
Yeah, I will do it.
Hmm, it's done. Okay. By the plan, I see, every place that says yes, I'm good, right, so, okay, so, um. For the.
Scale.
Natural.
Cause you may need to request a wa- a waiver on the scale, it says it should be no less than one inch equals twenty feet.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's less than that, or if it's larger than.
No, we've done that before.
Is that forty? Is that forty?
You have one inch.
It's forty, Lance, that's.
Yes, we have.
We've done that before.
We've done that waiver, all the time.
Yeah, so I, I would do that, you know, you have one inch equals ten, I mean.
Okay.
That's ten scale, the large one is ten scale, shit, forty.
One inch equals ten.
Is provided on the plan.
Sure, one inch.
Oh, usually we get twenty, cause it's, cause the bylaw I thought was one inch equals forty.
Well, this says right here, one inch equals twenty feet, it can be no less than one inch equals twenty feet.
And this is ten?
Yeah, so you just, you would just vote to waive it, but technically you should.
Okay. Okay.
So who?
Okay.
Cause I can't.
I, okay, so I have a motion to waive the, uh, one inch equals twenty feet requirement. Is there a second?
Oh, sorry, there is.
And there is a second, any further discussion? Hearing saying none.
Carol, officers, yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
Michaela, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. Okay, we waive that. Um, existing pro- uh, and shall show all existing proposed counters, yes, existing, yes, structures, yes. Uh, parking spaces nine, radius of project not shown on plans. Parking spaces nine, spaces provided on plans. Um, are we good with the nine?
I think we're good.
Knowing, this, this is on the plan, this is not what's accessible to the building.
Is, is, is the plan showing nine spaces?
Six, seven, eight.
They're counting.
Did I count wrong?
Yeah, but they should show it on the, on the map.
There's eight.
There's eight.
There's eight, there's two, or, there's, the.
Okay, where do we get nine?
So you could generally vote, um, you know, a finding that the planning board finds the per, you know, the parking spaces are suitable for the use, or, you know, some sort of wording that you're comfortable with that and vote on it.
Intended use. Oh, okay, I'll take a motion. Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion that eight parking spaces that are provided in the draw. I'll, I'll make a motion that eight parking spaces that are provided in the drawing, um, are appropriate with the planned use.
Second.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
McQuaritch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes, that.
There was no further discussion.
They jumped right into it, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the spaces. Um, service areas, facilities for service, refuge, not shown on plan.
So I don't know what service areas means, but you don't have your dumpster shown on there, um, obviously you don't need facilities for sewage, but I don't know what they mean by service areas in the bylaw. But there is no dumpster or disposal shown on there, so.
Do, do you have a dumpster at the building?
Yeah.
It's existing, it's OPAC.
It's existing.
And it's existing.
It's in the rear and it's existing and it's been there for years, it's just not, they didn't show it.
Are, are we good with knowing that there is a dumpster there, but it not shown on plan?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, first thing.
So, please accept, to the board, please accept that. That there, the dumpster that is at the facility is not shown on the presented plan. And we accept that.
A new?
Need a vote?
Okay, yeah, Andrew made motion.
Okay.
Oh, seconded.
Carol seconded. Any further discussion?
No. Carol Hofstas, yes.
Everybody, okay.
Lance McNally, yes.
McQuaritch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. Okay, um, let's see, other waste disposal, what land, so, uh. Granny curbing and comb, retaining wall comb, pad comb, construction, I think that is.
Concrete.
Oh, concrete, sorry. Pad overhang are provided on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, the concrete pad walkway with overhang shown on plan and lighting, lighting is not shown. Um.
Both existing and proposed, I don't know if you want to write in your decision.
Are you doing additional lighting?
It is, no.
No, it's, everything is for two units right now, so there is, there will be no additional lighting outside.
I think this means outside.
Yes, no, outside.
Okay, there will be none, okay.
The, the lighting there now, that, that's existing, there's no, there's no proposed addition to that.
And that's not on twenty-four seven?
No, no.
Um.
I, I was just saying that if you, if you look at what they're, they're doing, is they're just closing an eight foot area where there's already a lot of existing stuff, so.
It's in the bylaw, so. Yeah, for the exterior, yeah.
Right.
I mean, I think the main ones were parking spots and traffic.
Um, okay, so that's, that's the end of the.
And the map scale. The map scale was actually, uh, oh, sorry, the locust map was actually provided on the revision, I saw that, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, so, um, would it be appropriate to have a motion that says the board accepts the drawing, ex, accepts the drawing as is?
Oh, yeah.
Is there a motion?
Make a, I'll make a motion to accept the drawing as presented.
A second?
Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
McQuaritch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes.
We've done everything.
So that's that. Oh, okay, can I just go on to this one?
Oh, I think, I don't think there was anything else in it. You already addressed the parking.
We don't need the waiver.
You addressed the parking, um.
We have to, we haven't addressed traffic.
Oh, all right, yeah. You could do as general, again, a general motion, but, you know.
I would like to make a motion that, uh, basically we have an existing two businesses and that we don't see any significant increase in traffic.
Seconded.
And so that was Patrick seconded, okay, and we accept the plan as is.
I make a, well, we need to vote on the traffic.
On the traffic, well, I meant everything. Okay, we're voting on the traffic, we accept it.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
McQuaritch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes.
Can I make the motion that we, um, approve, um, the, um, site plan?
Site plan review special permit, and please give the address and the.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the site plan review special permit on two forty-nine Main Street.
No, seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
McQuaritch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. We're done.
Well, I make, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Oh, you can do that.
Seconded. Carol's got it.
Okay, and now we need a roll call, so.
Lance McNally, yes.
Mary Jane.
Laura Schiffern, yes.
If it's part of signing, you all want to sign it.
Hey.
This is how government should work, you know what I mean? Very nice to meet you. Very nice to meet you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, salut.
Thank you. So what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna write down your decision.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So as soon as we sign it.
Thank you. Thank you, have a nice night.
You too.
Okay, sure.
Good on you.
Oh, Jesus, I can't even find reading, I don't even find reading.
And, and.
You never got to get writing.
Great.
You know what it is, people are so sick, people.
Thank you, thank you for the.
You all want to sign it, everybody want to sign it, or if you wanna just have.
You see it every day on the board. Get members on, please.
Please sign it?
You can do that if you're around, I can not done probably.
Look at where they are, I don't want to see them.
There's still many. There's four people running right now, there's four people running.
Huh?
I, I, I would like to make a motion that.
Unless you all wanna come in and sign.
The chair can sign for the board on the decision that Beth is gonna prepare.
Thank you.
Seconded. I seconded.
Patrick's got it.
Third.
No, let's, give it to Patrick.
Okay.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
We're gonna share the seconds.
All right. The chairman will sign, once it's ready, thank you, to the board members. Um, so, I think we did a lot today. Um, the next item on the agenda would be three point two, planning board regulations review one seventy-five dash fourteen, plans for definitive subdivision one seventy-five dash fifteen. Uh, required submissions for definitive, did you say you did some, and you're gonna send?
I go, I mean, I, uh, no, I, I read them, but I didn't really, I didn't have any comments, I didn't have any changes.
Okay, Lance?
Um, yeah, I reviewed them, um. Gosh, the only comment that I think was, um, substantial, I just wanted to run it by Beth, was shouldn't, under the general provisions where plans for definitive subdivisions shall contain the following, do we wanna add wetlands to that?
Uh, you'll have to show me the sentence where, it's in the regulations, one seventy-five.
Fourteen, and they have A, a cover sheet, a vicinity map, a contour map.
Yeah.
A, a primary conservation area map, a conventional layout plan, a soil test map.
Isn't that the conservation area? Would that be?
I mean, I just thought, to show wetlands, be more specific.
Be more specific. Yeah, yeah, um, you know, I don't know if that's required now.
I know in an A and R, we have to, they have to show wetlands.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and where it becomes a requirement is that the wetlands are in fact subtracted from the land area.
Right, right, yeah, I suppose you could make that change, that's easy enough.
Um.
I can ask.
And, and I can send you this, and the other comment that I had was, where we used acronyms like MPDES and OSPD.
Yeah.
It would be nice that the first time we use it, we spell it out and then in parentheses, say what it stands for.
It should. Okay.
Yeah, that's true.
It should, we talked about that before.
And. Yeah, and so, you know, um, there was the, um, NPDES, um, OSPD, OSMD. Were the three that I saw.
Okay, yeah. So that's in the rights, um, all right, I'll make sure, it may have been spelled out earlier, you know what I mean, you're coming in starting at one seventy-five fourteen.
But still, I think it's good maybe within each section to do it.
Each section. Sounds good, sounds good.
Oh, yes, definitely.
On your wetlands, would this cover your wetland map?
When I looked at it, um. I, I looked at that, and to me, that, it just said, uh, the primary conservation area map.
Oh, paragraph D.
Primary conservation area?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it says, shall show inappropriate colors, all perennial streams, fardies of waters, wetlands, floodplains, wellhead protection areas.
But for zones, areas of slope. It's in there?
Yeah, I saw that, um.
So if it's in there, then you don't wanna be.
We don't wanna be redundant, we.
Okay, fine, I agree, all right.
It gets wimpy, wimpy, yeah, simpler is better.
All right, all right, all right, so I'll just have the abbreviation spelled out.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
Looks like paragraph D covers wetlands too.
Okay. All right.
Okay, we can, that will probably keep staying on our list until we approve.
Oh, the regulations?
Yeah.
I.
Or are we going on to another regulation after this?
Well, um, there were two, the one seventy-five fifteen and one seventy-five.
So, so on fourteen, could I make a motion that we prove it conditionally based upon spelling out the acronym, so we don't have to bring it back?
Sure. But you can.
All right, so I make, I make a motion that the board conditionally approves one seventy-five fourteen with having acronyms spelled out at least once, um, before use?
Yeah.
Let me second that.
Cool.
And, uh, Carol Hofstas, yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
McQuaritch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes.
You guys are easy.
Thank you guys. Love it.
Pretty easy.
Um, can I go on to Andrew in correspondence?
Well, do we want like a one seventy-five fifteen?
Uh, no, 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 um. I had no comments on one seventy-five fifteen.
I had no comments, did anyone, do we want to approve it?
I make a motion that we approve one seventy-five fifteen as presented to us?
Mm, I'll second it.
No further discussion?
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
I didn't read fifteen, so.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. Okay, you can add something else next time, just let us know ahead.
That's why you have it.
Okay, Andrew, please, uh, correspondence.
Yes. Correspondence, uh, first, we have four point one land removal from chapter sixty-one B, parcel ID seventeen dash ten dash zero, twenty-seven Bayberry Hill Road. This is from the law offices of Janelis and Ward.
Janelis.
Jelineus and Ward, LLP, one oh six Miriam Avenue, Lemmonster, uh, to the town of Townsend, referring to, um, the former Virginia Welch property, twenty-seven Bayberry Hill Road. Dear board, please be advised that I represent the estate of Virginia F. Welch, who was the surviving owner of the above parcel, who sold the lot where the home exists and intends on selling the two remaining parcels and removing all of the land from chapter sixty-one B classification. While we are unsure of the actual proposed use of the vacant lots upon the sale, seller does anticipate that it is for the construction of single family residence. I am attaching to this letter of intent the executed purchase and sale agreement, which I certify is a true and accurate copy, the assessors map which shows this parcel and its acreage as assessed. Thank you for expeditiously reviewing this matter under the provisions of MGL sixty-one B and the exercise of your right of first refusal. Very truly yours, Robert J. Meyer, Myers.
Would the board like this?
So that's going to the town?
No, it's, it's being taken out of sixty-one B and sold to someone.
And you have a right, and the town has a right of first refusal, right? So you can probably.
Well, that's what I heard.
Discuss that amongst yourselves and then take a vote?
What is sixty-one B?
Uh, it's chapter four straight, so they get four, um.
Forestry. Tax, tax break.
Yeah, right, but then when it's taken out, um, I believe they still have to pay the past five years, um.
Yeah.
I don't know how many years.
It's kinda like curtsies when you actually.
Yes, yes.
So this is.
Is it a large parcel?
Well, it must be, but.
I don't know if it's too crazy.
I don't know, cause it's not much money.
I remember it being a hot sale from the young kids in town, I've talked to, looking for parcels.
Yeah, but.
Went pretty quick.
This is.
I, I don't, I would as, I don't, I would assume, I don't know, I didn't, it didn't say anywhere where I could see what the acreage was. If I really wanted to figure out what size it was, I'd have to go to the.
Oh.
Uh, the, you know, south middlesex deeds or whatever.
Yeah.
But I assume that it's, it's probably two acres or, you know, two to three acres for a house lot.
Sure.
And it was also, I think, uh, proposed sale price was a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah. I guess.
So we are.
But he's sending this to the town of Townsend.
It's what, it's already been sold, so.
Yes, to the select board, um, the conservation commission, the planning board, and the assessors of the B, right?
In case we wanna buy it.
I don't think, I don't think it's been sold, I think a deposit's been put.
Well, there's a purchase and sale, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's more than one parcel.
It was.
It's more than one purchase and sale.
Yeah, A and R.
You guys had A and R at, um.
Oh, I remember that meeting.
Yeah, when, when was this A and R?
Oh, same buyer, though.
Uh, in February, remember with A and R, it was three lots.
Yeah.
Back at the A and R plan.
Well, I mean, the, the, um. The town has given a right of first refusal.
Do you guys recall that? I know Carol signed it, um.
Oh, yeah, I remember that A and R part.
Yeah, so, so this was A and R in, in February, yeah, I see Carol.
Yeah.
I think that's Robert and another signature.
So the planning board has an ability to prevent them from removing it from sixty-one B?
No.
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 So why are they asking?
I think, I don't know, I don't know that we have any role in this whatsoever, except that we already had a role in it, when we approved the A and R. Which we really don't disapprove of A and Rs.
No.
Cause approval's not required. We only get notified. And I, and, I mean, the town doesn't have the money to buy it, if, if they, the town has the right of first refusal, they don't have the money to buy it anyway, so.
Yeah.
And we, and we need more, we do need more house lots, so, we need more housing to be built in this town.
A simple vote to take no action inappropriate.
I make a motion that we take no action, um, um.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven Bayberry Hill Road.
Oh, seconded.
Any more discussion? The guy who did that.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
McQuaritch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes.
All right, four point two, received from Townsend and Abudding Towns, correspondences. Here we have the town of Pepperell Planning Board, this is a notice of special permit decision. Uh, the applicant was a James Basil, on behalf of the Linda M. Lashkey Trust. Location of the property is seventy-three seventy-nine Main Street in Pepperell, map twenty-three, parcel slash lot one seventy dash zero. Let's see, relief requested, special permit decision granted, there are no other details about that. Town of Groton, the office of the planning board, um, site plan review, Lawrence Academy, gray building renovation, dated October twenty-first. This is a notice of a public hearing for Thursday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven fifteen PM in the Groton Town Hall, to consider. to consider the site plan review applications submitted by Lawrence Academy for renovation of the Gray Building on assessors parcel one sixteen dash ten. The proposed renovation will involve demolition and replacement of the existing dining hallway, along with site improvements, including the addition of new terraces on the front and rear of the existing building. Uh, copies are available in the planning board's office.
It's not a patio, it's a terrace.
Yeah, it is a terrace. Uh, the town of Lunenburg, office of the planning board, notice of decision, um, thirteen thirty-five, Mass Ave, site plan approval, change of use. Application for site plan approval, change of use, um, under the section two fifty dash eight point four B six code, the town of Lunenburg. Was submitted to the planning office on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Purpose, change of proposed use within the building to a retail establishment, assessors map number sixty-two, parcel number five. Applicant is a Dale Erskine, uh, thirteen thirty-one Mass Ave, Lunenburg is also the property owner. Lunenburg Planning Board held and closed a public hearing on September twenty-third. The outcome, the planning board at its September twenty-third meeting voted to approve the site plan approval for change of use to retail, and granted all waivers requested. The site plan approval was endorsed by the planning board on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and filed with the town clerks on October twenty-ninth. And that is essentially it.
Thank you, Andrew.
Yep.
Uh, received from the Tucuset Regional Planning Commission, other agencies, such as stuff that's in our portal or the nothing.
Yeah, I don't think we have anything this time.
Okay. Okay. And then the education and training, that's just standard to have for you guys in the portal. And then our next meeting is November eighteenth and December ninth. And if there's no other business to come before this meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
And eight forty-four PM.
Eight forty-four, thank you.
Yes.
Oh, Carol Hofstas, yes.
Lance McNally, yes?
McQuarchuk, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Shepherd, yes, no one objected. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hartley.
Thank you, Hartley. You are most welcome, have a good night. Thank you.
You too.
Thanks, Dave.